6:00 PM, July 20th, 2021. I call the O'Conne County Council Meeting to order. As a reminder, the public has two times that they can speak in council meeting. First is public comments and the second is public hearing, if there is one scheduled. Other than those two times, the public should remain silent during council meetings. Anyone making this move during the meeting will be asked to leave council chambers for the remainder of the meeting. Mr. Root?
Please, I cover it. Good, thank you.
Moment of silence, please. Mr. Root?
Yes, sir. Pray with me if you'd like to. Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you've made for the sun peeking out, reminding us of freshness and opportunities and hope. And with the new baby, with Mr. Kane's child that Amy gave birth to this morning. Thank you for these new days, these new beginnings, and help us to be optimistic in light of that, in light of your promises, in light of life that you've given us, to not take it for granted, to live each moment that you've given us with appreciation and with mindfulness, knowing that the next moment is not promised to us, but that we have just this. So in this moment, help us to be kind to our neighbors, to one another, to love you, to be slow to speak and slow to anger, but quick to listen. Pray that this will be your meeting. In your name I pray. Amen.
Mr. Davis, would you leave some please?
Please, sir.
Please stand. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir.
Is the motion approved the June 15th, 2021, regular minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is the motion approved the June 22nd, 2021, special minutes?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes, there's just one in relation to ordinance 2021-16. The easement, this is the sewer easement requested by the OJRSA. The easement is in the back of materials. There will be a survey for second reading. Just received that today. I had to send it out to a couple of parties to make sure that survey is accurate before we finalize it. So I just wanted to give a notice to that. The easement's there, but the survey is not yet, but it will be for our next meeting. And that's all I have.
Rock.
Yes, I do have one matter of general housekeeping for a typographical error in two locations on the current agenda. The agenda that is placed in the back of the room is the corrected version. If you'll all notice on page four, there are two areas that are in red type. The words are "Expansion of West Terminal Apron Site Prep" that replaces words for[215.26][215.26]"Relocation of Nevo Church Road." There were three consecutive change orders and a typographical error occurred in both instances and does not change the backup material or substance of the request for council approval for such.
Thank you. Presentation to council, 2021 Upstate Economic Update. Upstate Alive Activities. John Loomis, President and CEO of Upstate South Carolina Alliance, please.
Well, good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak for the council, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm John Loomis with the Upstate Alliance. I've been in my role for about seven and a half years. And just a little background, I'm an upstate native. I grew up in Anderson and I've worked at Tri-County Tech for about eight years. So I've worked a lot with O'Conne County, your business and industry up here, and I'm proud to be a part of that group. And thank you so much for the support of O'Conne County. I also want to say, talk a little bit about our organization. We are the Regional Economic Development Group for the upstate 10 counties of South Carolina, so O'Conne being one of those 10. What we do is we market the region to the world, go out and try to find businesses that will come here. And then we work very closely with our local economic developers in our counties, and then we have city members as well. So we work with Annie Cagiano on a daily basis. She does a fantastic job in working with us to help recruit industry into the county. She's very involved in the Upstate Alliance as well. She's the vice chair of the Local Economic Developers Committee. She was elected by her peers to do that, and she's a real professional and I really enjoy working with her. So thank you for giving me that opportunity as well. So I'll start my presentation. 2020 was a big year for the Upstate Alliance as we had our, as we celebrated our 20th anniversary. And as part of that occasion, we started looking at, you know, what is economic development and why do we do it? And how can we do it better over the next 20 years than we did it for the first 20 years? We had many ambitious plans starting in 2020, but our group, like the entire world really, came to sort of a standstill about March of last year. And we started looking at how can we do things better and different in a COVID economy first and a post-COVID economy second. So we really started working on a lot of different things internally, but I did want to share with you, we still had a good year in 2020, believe it or not. About 1.25 billion in new capital investment, about 3,000 jobs. We had 57 total announcements around the region, which was less than we normally had. I think we had 92 the year before. So a lot of companies either stopped their process of locating, or a lot of these were existing industry expansions. But behind the scenes, we still, you know, fulfilled requests for information, gave presentations, and hosted visits to the region, you know, both in person in January and February of last year, and then virtually for the rest of the year. So one of the things that we worked very hard on was modifying our marketing materials. We took the time during COVID to really look at everything that we had, and we redid all of our print materials. And then we really started working on our digital campaign and digital marketing, because that's basically the way that we were having to recruit industry during COVID, because we couldn't go visit with anybody. So we came up with several campaigns, one on food and beverage, one on life sciences. And I think we got some really good response, again, using the great stories of companies that are here or in the upstate. We also, as I mentioned, had virtual events. One of those, we normally have consultant, site consultants in. Site consultants are individuals or companies that work with companies across the world to find locations. Each year, we bring a group of those in the fall to the upstate and highlight the upstate, introduce them to our local economic developers and our businesses. This year, we weren't able to do that. So we had a virtual event, and it actually worked out great. We had more that were involved in that than we've ever had in numbers. We also had an international COI gathering. When I say COI, I mean Centers of Influence. So we had a number of our individuals that work at international consul generals throughout the southeast from mainly European countries, but about 19 different countries that participated in that. And we're getting out the message of the upstate so they can take that back to the companies that they work with. We also continue to deepen our international connections. We have great relationships with a number of countries. Last year, we worked really hard with Ireland. We brought over an Irish manufacturing group, about 20 companies. They actually came the last week in February. So I think they were about the last ones on a plane landing back in Dublin. Then we had, we earlier, I mean, up in, earlier in February, we had a group from Belgium that came. And then we've continued to develop relationships with the United Kingdom. So this is so important with what we do, because we do have 545 international companies here in the upstate from 34 countries, and we want to continue those relationships. Our research team, that we have never missed a beat last year, we responded to 264 total requests for information and support. And of particular note, the local economic developers increased their collaboration with our research team with a 61% increase in the number of requests for research support. So as we were kind of looking internally at what we could do, our local economic developers were doing a lot of research on companies and what they could do as well. So one, one thing I think that was incredibly important that happened over the last couple of years is how are we representing the upstate of South Carolina to the world? And one of those metrics that really shows that impact are digital searches for the term "upstate South Carolina," and those increased 22% between December 2018 and December 2020, which is pretty incredible, 4,400 searches per month, people going on, trying to find out about upstate South Carolina and trying to get information about us. I think this is a testament to the power of digital marketing and the value of the upstate identity. And that's what we do. We're out there talking about the upstate and selling our region as one. So I've shared how the Upstate Alliance has adapted our approach in response to change. And in the same spirit, there are changes and trends in the global business environment that affect our region, and this has been true for decades. And with the same changes we've seen as a result of the coronavirus, we've looked to understand these changes, trends, and being part of emerging solutions is now more important than ever for the Upstate Alliance. We need to make sure we're maintaining our economic health and continuing to adapt and stay ahead. So I want to talk about a couple of trends that we're looking at. We continue to focus on target industries, aerospace, automotive, engineered materials, life sciences. Those are the main manufacturers in O'Conne County. We recognize that our region has the right assets to support these companies, and these companies are good targets because they're growing and because they're complex with technology and research that makes them competitive in the global marketplace. We've recently added food and beverage as a target industry to stay ahead of the curve as that industry grows. And we saw a lot, we've seen a lot more companies looking at our area since COVID, because so many of the supply chains were disrupted. You couldn't get chicken, you couldn't get toilet paper, you couldn't get all these crazy things. And now they're looking to have companies that can distribute on the East Coast, because there's 100 million people that live within one day's drive and distance of where we are. We also started looking more at life science companies, which obviously with COVID, more of the pharmaceutical companies and medical device companies are looking to move here. Second thing is embracing innovation. As y'all know, all of our manufacturers particularly are becoming more automated, and technology is very important to their increased efficiency and output. One of the things is important to recognize that technology is changing how businesses operate. You saw during, you know, the pandemic, people learned to work from home, people learned to use Zoom, people learned to use all these technology, technologies to help their businesses stay alive. And we're seeing that across the business landscape. Technology can enable people to work from home, work from anywhere. And that's why we have to be, try to be even more competitive to bring in higher caliber job opportunities, utilizing innovation. We've also seen the trend towards smaller projects. You're probably used to large economic announcements, big projects that bring in millions of dollars and hundreds of jobs. Though many companies are now expanding to new markets in smaller ways, many of them provide technology solutions that enhance existing manufacturing operations, and they want to test the waters before they're bringing in their whole operation. We started about four years ago, an initiative called our Landing Pad Initiative, which basically connects mostly international companies that want to locate in the United States with opportunities for real estate, support services, and really trying to find them customers so they'll come to our region. And we really have focused on that. We've had about 15 of those companies that have landed in the upstate over the last three years. So we've always talked about industry recruitment. The new trend that we have to be so aware of is talent recruitment. As y'all well know, most, every company is looking for workers and can't, many of them can't find trained workers. So a way that the Upstate Alliance tried to make an impact on this, in 2019, we started a website, an initiative called Move Up, which is a talent attraction website. And it basically connects people looking for jobs with those job opportunities with quality of life information about the upstate region. And it, we've had a lot of success. We targeted 10 areas around the country to send through digital, digital mapping and digital marketing. And that was going very well, and then the pandemic hit, and we started saying, well, why are we going to continue to try to recruit talent here when there's 12% unemployment? So we started up a new part of that website called Skill Up, and it connects people that are looking for jobs with training opportunities at the technical college. So if you want to be a welder and you see there's a welding job available somewhere in O'Conne County, it will lead you to Tri-County Tech and the certification training you need to get, to get to that job. So we're working on recruiting talent to the area and trying to build talent as well. So that, that's what our website looks like there. And I would encourage y'all to go on that and take a look at it in your spare time. Lastly, maintaining a stable business environment is so important. As all of you know, South Carolina did a really good job during the pandemic in staying open. Our manufacturers were all deemed essential businesses. You know, we stayed running. We opened back up for commercial businesses, hospitality businesses, a lot quicker than a lot of the other areas of the country. And that's allowed our economy to really come back quicker than a lot of our, our neighbors and a lot of places around the country. And I think as we continue on, South Carolina is going to stand at the top, because our economy was not as affected. I mean, there were many people that were very affected, obviously, as other parts of the country. And I think that's going to help us moving forward. So I'll conclude by just basically saying that we're the regional group that works to bring everybody together to make the economy stronger across the upstate. And as we've seen, we've seen that during the shutdown, people have continued to work together even from afar. And as we come out of the economic downturn, it's even more important that we continue to work together as a region. I want to thank O'Conne County for being part of the Upstate Alliance. Y'all are a great member, very involved in what we do. We want to keep working with y'all to bring business here as in the future.
I want to say thank you, and I want to say thank you to you and your organization, to all the help of economic development. It's very important to O'Conne County, and we appreciate any help that you can give us.
Thank you so much.
Got anything else?
Yeah, I would like to echo Mr. Elliott. So I must thank you for your leadership over the years and your staff's leadership and, you know, what your board brings to the table. And they're really a huge tool that we are able to have in our toolbox, that is much needed as we come out of 2020. 2021's looking good. We've got a lot. I mean, just look at what we have on, that's interested in O'Conne County tonight. And I think that's the great thing, is to get people to look at us and then let us do the rest. And appreciate all that y'all continue to do to support O'Conne County and all the upstate as well.
And I, thank you, thank you, Julian. I appreciate that very much. And I will say that during my seven, a little bit over seven years in this job, we've had the most activity of people being interested, both going on our website, site consultants contacting us with projects, Department of Commerce contacting us with projects, real estate people. I mean, we, we have been covered up, which is a great thing. And then we relay those leads to, you know, Annie and her staff, and, you know, we, we really work with them on that. We hope that we can continue to be that busy during the rest of 2021 into 2022. But you have a really great professional group over there that is very responsive in what we do.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Moore?
Mind be short and brief, you know that I appreciate you, so that's allowed to say.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. A comment session. Each person has four minutes. I'll hold up a yellow sign when you have one minute left, and when your time's up, I'll hold up a red sign. Mr. Tony Adams.
I'm Tony Adams, and I'm still a concerned taxpayer of O'Conne, just like I was last time. You guys completed one of your primary responsibilities at the last council meeting, which was passing the county budget for this fiscal year. Now it's time to begin another important part of your job, and that's providing oversight to the county budget. Just because it's budgeted does not mean it has to be spent. This time last year, I recommended that council be given a periodic budget variance report to aid in providing oversight of the budget, and I believe this was done. But it appears the current variance report may not be very useful, since all the line items in a departmental budget are summarized into four or five items, which severely limits the usefulness of a budget variance report. What you needed is a variance report that shows each department budget by line item with separate columns for budget amount, monthly spending, year-to-date spending, and balance. This should have enough detail to prevent any budget padding or creative financial management. The information could be provided to council electronically. I say above because what I saw when I analyzed the fiscal year 2017, 18 departmental budget for the county was that some line items changed during the year. The amount that had been approved by the council changed over the years, and they didn't go down either. They went up. And I never quite figured that out. I didn't know where that money was coming from. I had some suspicions, but nothing to back it up. So there is a little bit of history. That was back in fiscal year 2017, 18. I did it late 2018, 2000, or 2019. In closing, I want to say I discussed the new fiscal year budget. We started with a good number of people, and these people have unanimously said they did not believe a majority of council are being good stewards of our tax dollars. And the mentality of spending money just because we have it needs to end. Nobody can deny that the county budget we are operating on today is $7 million higher than the budget we were operating on 12 months ago. People mentioned things like 13 new jobs added in one year. 14, if you take into consideration that Mr. Kane wants to use one salary equivalent for a study to help county staff communicate or teach them to communicate. Personally, I think Mr. Brock, Mr. Root is pretty good at communicating right now. Are we just trying to follow other people or emulate other departments or counties because we can afford it? People talk about things like $250,000 to remodel a building the county might need to use someday in the future. Free firefighter jobs that people want where these three people will be working. These significant increases in wages and salaries in some departments that are not scheduled for new employees. Oh, this is over the above 3% cost of living increase. In closing, I'll say that if we all don't realize that big government is one of the basic problems in our country today, we never will. And I like to say, though, O'Conne is just as small as Africa, but that'll go.
Mr. Luke Moore?
All right. I'm Luke Moore from Fair Play. I'm sure everybody here pretty much knows who I am now. Last time I was here, I was pretty upset about the, about the Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer being missing off of that. And I come up here and I chewed you out pretty good about it. So being a man of, being a man of trying to stand up for what's right, I do understand that that was not a direct spit in my face like I assumed it was. I was in the wrong for assuming that the way I did, and I took it out pretty hard on you, and I want to apologize to you for that. I also want to apologize to you, because I told y'all that y'all should have seen that coming and done something about it. I chewed everybody out pretty hard, so I apologize to all y'all for that. And I want to show you that I appreciate seeing it this time on there. That's what, that's what it's supposed to be about, people coming up here when they have an issue with something, whatever it may be, whether it's this, whether it's that budget, whether it's, whatever ordinance comes up on this thing, to be able to talk to each of you and us to be able to come to an agreement and be able to get it took care of. We're not all going to see eye to eye on everything. We're not all going to agree on everything. But I believe that when a man does right, he deserves praise, and when a man does wrong, he deserves whatever he's got coming for it. I'm just, I'm just that way. But I come up here, I dished out something that was, that should not have been directed at you as the way it was, so I want to make sure that you guys understand that I'll stand up and point out where I was wrong and correct that. And also, I would like to add that I've never spoken to three of you. So I would like to request a personal conversation at some time in the future, just one-on-one with each one of you. Y'all are the council. I am one of the citizens, and I would like to be able to, I feel like if we're a little bit more understanding of who each other is, that at least on my end, I feel like it can go smoother. It may not be that way, but I feel like at least on my end, it can. So with that being said, when I, when I come up here and I have feelings about something, I'll understand the man that I'm talking to. I'll understand hopefully a little bit more about the way of thinking that each man has, and I can deal with it, you know, much better. If we understand each other, who we are, we can work together a whole lot better. And I'd like to see if I can bridge the gap between myself and some of you guys. Julian, I know we've never spoken. I'd like to speak to you. Mr. Elliott, we've never spoken. I'd like to speak to you. And I know that the last time when all that happened and I found out that I had basically chewed y'all out over something that, and by the way it happens, hurt. And she was an innocent bystander, but that's what I did. So I'm sorry for you too. But I would like to, instead of when this is over, if it's possible, if you guys will take time, when this is over, instead of getting gone before I can speak to you, I'd like to be able to have a conversation with you. Thank you.
Mr. Perry Smith?
Hey, guys. My name's Perry Smith. I hope you all had a great vacation. I'd like to start with, with Mr. Durham here. Mr. Durham led the charge for O'Conne County to be a sanctuary county for the unborn. He had haters, protesters outside here the day, the day this was voted on. At the end of this session, Mr. Durham walked out that door right there with the people that supported him and thanked them. That's a leader, that's a leader, guys. After the last meeting, the only person in favor of the budget that didn't vote was Ms. Brock, and she walked out that door with us. She didn't walk out the back door like you three guys did. You should have walked out with us. You know, you guys had, had the deputy watching, watching to make sure nobody came out. It's just very disappointing. What did you guys think we were going to do to you? Really? Julian, I'm the most disappointed in you. You're much like the rest of us, whether you believe it or not. At least I thought you were. You had the opportunity that night to be the hero for the county, for the people of this county, by, by not voting on the budget and just giving in and just doing what Mr. Durham wanted you to do and take some time and go over it. I thought you and I were making up some grounds. I even invited you out to dinner that night, and I knew you were going to vote against this. And after this, you blocked me again on Facebook. And after this, you blocked me again on Facebook. I ain't got a clue why, but you could tell me. You've got my number. You can call me and let me know. I'll talk to you. It don't matter. When you came to see us at the pre-seek meeting, you, in my opinion, you threw Mr. Durham under the bus by saying he was grandstanding. We knew who you were talking about. You didn't say his name, but we knew who you were talking about. That's, that's it. That's it. Paul, Mr. Paul. You get on the Journal's Facebook page and address county business. You attack Luke Moore and Mr. Durham, and you have Mr. Luke Moore blocked on Facebook. Do you still have Luke Moore blocked on Facebook? Okay, you do. He couldn't see your post and could not respond to you. So blocking residents and leaving out the back door shows you don't want to face the residents you're supposed to represent. That's, to me, that's an ethics violation as well as a violation of Luke's First Amendment right. He should be re, he should be reprimanded for this unprofessional behavior. And just so you know, Mr. Durham did not have anything to do with what Luke done. Nothing. Hey, guys. And also, John knew about the, about John. Yeah. Paul. Knew about the prayer not being in there for the last six years. John, this was my first experience with the, uh, with the local politics when I attended the Republican Party Convention. At Keewee Key. As you know, it was canceled because of lack of space. I spoke to Mr. Durham. I saw him, but I did not see you there. That's why it's rather shocked, that's why I was rather shocked to read in the Journal that you referred to us, who did attend, as in your words, a mob. That statement makes it seem like you really don't like ordinary people being involved in the politics process, and I would like to ask you, do you regret making that statement? Or do you stand by it? If you regret, if you regret it, have you considered publicly apologizing to us, uh, in the paper?
I have one written comment to read. It's from Jay Bryant, chief of Pickett Post Fire Department. On behalf of the volunteer fire departments, I'd like to say thank you for the new engine that was purchased and distributed to those departments that received one. Hopefully, in the future, all the other aging equipment will be replaced. As a volunteer fire department chief, I would like to say that the members of Station 21 have, will always be useful and helpful in unit within Oconee County Emergency Services. Majority of the members of a volunteer fire department have full-time jobs and are able to respond to ever increasing calls that we see today. Station 21 was created to help the volunteer fire department with weekly apparatus and equipment checks, such as lights and sirens operating each pump to ensure proper working condition and checking all the small engine run equipment on each apparatus. Not only are they help, not only are they to help ensure proper working conditions of the equipment, 21 of the staff also helps with doing inspections on businesses within each department's jurisdiction. Station 21 was never intended to come in and take over any of the volunteer fire departments or to do away with volunteers. Volunteer firefighters are declining due to age, moving them away, or simply don't have the time anymore, not because Station 21 wants to take over and run the entire county on their own. The 21 staff is a great tool for volunteer departments to utilize within the county and are willing to help answer the calls, questions, or concerns that may occur. I hope this letter will justify the deed and use of Station 21 and its staff within Oconee County and its volunteer fire departments. Does anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. Go ahead. Excuse me. So we're going to council member comments now.
Right.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The hero statement, this job is not about being a hero. And if anybody thinks that you get elected to be a hero, then you're sadly mistaken. I think, I think this job, seriously, I spend a lot of time, um, doing it. And if you're blocking on my personal Facebook, it's probably because the times that people have tried to tag me and say, uh, things that I don't appreciate, but that's your right. It's your First Amendment right to write whatever you want to write on your Facebook. But if I blocked you, you probably know the reason I blocked you. So I have a lot of people blocked on Facebook, and that's my personal right to block anybody on my personal Facebook. I don't hide beside, I don't run a private group that I, you know, kick people in and out of. This is my personal Facebook with me and my family, and it is my right to block who I want to block, um, including those from Brazil that are trying to give me money or whatever. Like, I'm sure that y'all have had to do that as well. But if I blocked you, it's probably because of statements that have been made, um, that have been trying to tag me in. And, um, you know, if you're searching for me out there to search through my pictures, well, that's probably another reason why I blocked it. That's my personal, um, life, um, and I have that right to do that. And if it offends you, good to go. Doesn't bother me any. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Adams, you're just correct in that we are, the primary job overall is to be stewards of the taxpayers' money and their investment. And you're absolutely correct too, that yes, the budget's passed, but that's not the end of it, you know? Now's the oversight phase. And, uh, you brought us very good points, and I'll reach out to Ms. Brock and see what we can do going forward with that. Mr. Moore, I appreciate everything you said that says a lot about you and, uh, also appreciate you bringing up the concerns about the prayer as well. And I'm thankful that we came to a resolution with that. Uh, it, I went back and looked through the history of it. Council story, what, 1975? About the third or fourth meeting, they put the prayer on there, and it stayed on there for a long time. And then sometime in the 2000s, they took it off, and they put it back with the moment of silence, and then later prayer's been out and back. And sometimes there's temperance, they just get roped, and then they just continue your own. And just, sometimes we get the agenda and you just review the meat of it. You skip the forefront. Just on my, myself, so the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting, that is, we had prior to this, when Ms. Smith sent me the agenda, I just looked at the meat of it, even though we had this discussion about adding it. And I said, well, everything looks good to me. She says, well, what about the prayers? Oh, well, thank you. Thank you for reminding me because I just completely overlooked that header portion. But you're right, if we understand each other, we can work better together. And, uh, kind of getting to what you said, Mr. Smith, we, uh, it's obvious we don't always see eye to eye. There's some fundamental differences there. I think we work better together sometimes than it may appear. I truly believe we all have the same goal. Just we have different ways that we want to get there. That's all.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir.
I want to know why the price of copies have gone up from 25 cents to 50 and why recording a plant used to be $10 is 25 now. We've got that, what, 57 million tax dollars that we get, and then we're makin' the public for every other dollar we can get. Why is that? I, I didn't see that coming. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we'll move on. There are no public hearings scheduled. There's no third reading scheduled. Second reading of filing ordinance, ordinance 2021-14. An ordinance to appropriate and authorize the expenditure of a portion of local coronavirus fiscal recovery funding that has been allocated to Oconee County under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, that are known as ARPA, as follows. Number one, appropriating $2 million of county ARPA, ARPA funding for purposes of necessary water infrastructure improvements for the Salem-Salem Water Infrastructure Project. Two, authorizing expenditure subject to certain terms and conditions of up to $2 million of such appropriated funds for the Salem Water Infrastructure Project. And three, other matter, excuse me, other matters directly related thereto. Is there a motion to approve? So move. Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Ordinance 2021-50. An ordinance to appropriate and authorize the expenditure of a portion of local coronavirus fiscal recovery funding that has been allocated to Oconee County under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA, as follows. Appropriating $1,300,000 of county ARPA funding for the purposes of necessary water infrastructure improvements for the city of Westminster, Westminster Water Infrastructure Project. Two, authorizing the expenditure subject to certain terms and conditions of up to $1, 300,000 of such appropriated funds for the Westminster Water Infrastructure Project. And three, other matters related directly related thereto. Is there a motion to approve? So move. Second. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kevin Bronson.
Yes.
Uh, could you come up and expand a little bit on the Westminster project?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you for letting me come and make this request to you today. I wasn't real sure how to do it, so I put together a brief presentation, and if I get too long, Mr. Chairman, if you please just cut me off, I'll go back home. So Westminster is requesting of your allocation 1.3 million dollars. I'm going to go through in brief, and it, just for you or anybody else who may not know what we have in Westminster as, uh, as it relates to our water system and who we serve, that is what I hope to speak to here today and some of our, uh, the planning that we've been doing for improving that water system. Uh, we began operating in 1934. Uh, we constructed the water plant in 1979. We serve about 7,600 residents, and you can see how that breaks down. That 7,600 does not include roughly 1,500 that we serve through Tessie down along Lake Hartwell. About 66% of the customers, two-thirds, are county residents, not in the city. You can see how the, um, number of miles of water line and water main break down. About 80%, 78% is outside city limits, 22 inside. We use about 1.5 million gallons a day system-wide. We are capable of producing, uh, 4 million gallons a day. At least that's what we're permitted for. And, uh, our budget last year was almost 1.4, and this year, almost 1.6. And that did come with an increase in the per 1,000 gallon fee for outside-city customers. And please stop me anytime if you have questions. I'd like for, uh, you won't disrupt my flow of the presentation. Uh, in 2020, uh, this council authorized, I think it was $60,000 to help us begin planning our CIP. So I'm going to speak to that real briefly here. We've broken that into two phases, primarily so that we can apply through the USDA for rural development funding. That'll be a combination of grant and loan. We won't know how much will be grant and how much will be loan until we actually go through the process with USDA. We'll, uh, increase the reliability by looping some of the critical areas, uh, reduce water loss, which has been a problem for us, uh, in the past by replacing some of these old water lines and mains. The reason we run a lot of water off the end is because of pressure. The lines are old, they, they tend to break. We put too much pressure on them. This isn't real easy to read, and I'd be happy to get anybody that wants a bigger map of this. It was just the best way that I could capture it at the moment. Our city engineer, Troy Rosier, helped us break out the areas based off of our calls for service for the, the parts of the line that, um, or the parts of the system, the water lines, that have had the most stress under it, and help us loop the water system so that we could increase that reliability. You can see here that we've got it in, uh, the, the green is phase two, and the yellow is phase one. I think this will help, um, also allow us to serve more people that aren't currently tapped on to the water system, should they choose to. So our request, um, in some detail here, and I sent to you, that you had at the first reading, I'm happy to go back through it again at, at any level of detail that you would ask. The $987,000 and change that, that we are asking of you to help us install the, the two variable frequency drive, um, motors that we have bought and then to upgrade. And it's a little misleading here when I say upgrade 300 horsepower pumps. They're currently 500 horsepower pumps, or two of them. They were built in the 70s. They've been rehabilitated a number of times. Just the way things are made modernly now, we think we can reduce the 500 down to 300 horsepower. I got that all wrong. 300 horsepower. I got my horse and my power backwards. I'm nervous speaking in front of you, uh, Mr. Durham. We had $155,000 to repair, um, the plant reservoir. Our reservoir's got a leak on the back. We need to go in and repair that. The 987 that you see there, we're pretty confident and comfortable with those numbers because we bid a lot of these components out in March timeframe. Everything below that, we do not have current pricing on. So this is a staff estimate. We believe they're good estimates, but I, I want you to know that, that we don't have, uh, current pricing from the market on what that would cost. Market pricing has been crazy these last couple of months anyway. It really is kind of, we, we find out once we bid it. $65,000 for a filter upgrade, um, and maintenance. I was actually out at the water plant the other day, and we have one of the filters where we actually clean the water. The staff has to baby it in a lot of ways to keep that water moving through and not have to recycle the water too many times. Every time we recycle water, we're producing clean water that we would rather send to customers rather than use to keep moving through that filter. $60,000 for repair and improve the pipe gallery at the, at the yard, and then 32.5. That will help us replace some of the valves that we have at some of the, um, the water tanks. So the, the reason that I'm here asking for this money, the reason that I first approached Ms. Brock, who said, you got to ask your county council member, which was Mr. Davis, so I called him, and he was kind enough to take my calls and let me fumble through how we could best ask for this money of you, is back in 2019, the city of Westminster applied for a, a low-interest loan through the South Carolina Energy Office for the $414,000 that you see up there. And with that, we were able to install five variable frequency drives, and I, I put in here as much a note to myself as anything else. If I, if I say something that's technical speak that, that we use back, um, in the field, please make sure I explain it so that it's not that complicated. But, um, the VFDs just allow us to operate those motors from 1% to 100% rather than on or off. It, it's just a lot more energy efficient. But we've been able to install five VFDs, um, two, three of them at the water plant, two of them on Highway 76 Pump Station, and they're working well. We're gathering data. We believe that we're saving energy with those VFDs that we had not saved before. The last two that you see on there, the two variable frequency drives that we've purchased for the raw water intake, we have purchased those. They've been manufactured, but we are not able to install them, and that is because we need that 987,000 in order to install them. That was a staff mistake in that we put the cart before the horse and having the VFDs manufactured before we had the full cost of installation. I'm going to show you a few pictures when we get toward the end that'll help you understand some of the complexity of the, the installation that we have out at the raw water intake. So there's a little bit more background on that. We purchased the, the two VFDs, um, but are still looking for that funding source to be able to install them. We asked the South Carolina Energy Office if they would increase the amount of that $414,000 loan to cover the amount. At the time we made that request, the $987,000 was in the $600,000 range. Well, the reason I'm asking you for 987 is because we've seen price increases in a lot of the components, um, that, that make this up, and, and you can see that in the detail that I sent to you last time. The Energy Office didn't approve or deny. They said, hey, you, you fellows go back and see if you can find somebody else that will help you fund this. We're not going to say no yet, but we're not going to say yes now. We're not going to say no yet, but we're not going to say yes now. So we're still kind of in a holding pattern with them. If you were to approve this funds, we would go back to them, thank them for their time, and be able to get off the hook with them for that that we've requested from them. We've asked a number of state agencies to help us make up that gap, the urgency, if you will, that at least I feel, and I think the utilities director, I didn't introduce him, Lee Baker's sitting there, big guy in the black shirt, is happy to answer any questions you have, too, is that those two V F Ds that we had manufactured, they're now ready to be installed, and the longer we take to get them installed, the more they're not working, the more we're using up warranty without them producing, and the longer we're not saving energy and being able to realize those savings for the water system and for the customers. If we go through a typical state agency or a federal agency, it's going to take 12 to 18 months. We've got to get in funding cycles and whatnot, and I know you folks know what that entails. The city of Westminster has been allocated about the same amount we're asking you for through the A R P. However, since we're a municipality and not a county, our money has to come through the state, the state has to request it from the feds, the state has not yet requested it from the feds. So the cities are in a bit of a holding pattern, waiting on those monies to actually be delivered to us. The only thing I can kind of hang my hat on right now is that they're congressionally approved to be delivered by December the 31st. So my hope is that the state will make good on that request to the federal government, and that they'll come back to us that way. As we've talked about it in Westminster right now, a lot of, our talk is in improving our sewer system. I did not want to make that request to you for the 1.3 here because we had what I would call the more critical need on the water system, the 1.3 through A R P that would come directly to us. There is a lot of improvements that we can make with that, and we intend to leverage as much of that as we can. And just in brief, I know that you would know this anyway, but I put it up just for those who may question what I may be asking of you. And everything on this slide comes directly from the Treasury Department's website that gives guidance on how to use the A R P funds. And I highlighted in blue the part that supports my request to you, which is to make investments in water sewer, particularly to improve access to clean drinking water. And also, they have to be spent by December 31st, 2024. I believe we can spend everything that we're asking of you in that time period. If I take a quick step back, the C I P that you saw that have the map, the components of the map, I'm not asking that any of that part be funded through your funds because we're not certain that we could get that complete by December of 2024. It's probably going to be a little bit longer out. So everything that we ask for will fit the parameters here, and such as it is compliance with the A R P rules, what we're asking for is water infrastructure. It improves the access to clean drinking water. We'll be reducing electric consumption and reducing the amount of water that we clean but do not deliver. So that means more of the clean water that will be delivered, and we'll be able to do it by December 31st, 2024. And just real quick, this is a schematic, it's not real visible here, but it's the best we had at the time, that shows a little bit of an aerial layout. You can see when you come across Ramsey Creek, most of y'all may have been out there even. You've got to go way up the mountain, and then when you get to the top, you've got to come way down, and then there's even a greater drop-off when you get on the other side to the river. These two pictures, if you look at the one that's on the left, you can see the place we affectionately refer to as the Snake House. I'll give you one guess as well, we call it the Snake House. Most days, you can find snake in there. This is what it looks like going up to the Snake House. Ramsey Creek would be on the far side of that hill. It's a lot of rock, and it's steep. If you look at the picture that is on the right, this is if you were standing at the Snake House, looking back down to where the picture on the left was taken. You can see just how steep that grade gets. I'm going to go to the next picture. The tower that's in the, right in the middle of that picture that's holding the lines up there, you can just barely make out there in the middle of the picture, giving you a sense of the steep grade that is out there. And that is the 24-inch water line that comes up from the raw water intake, takes it up to the top of the hill, top of the mountain, however you want to classify it, and then two-mile trek down to the water plant. This is the mezzanine, what it looks like. If you look at the picture on the left, you can see the two bobble-headed-looking things, they're blue, all the way at the end of the mezzanine out over the water. Those are the two 500-horsepower pumps. They're old, they spill a lot of water when they run. It's a challenging environment. I don't know if anybody would design it quite as precarious these days as they did when they put this in, but we can still make it work. It's in workable shape. And then on the right, you can see the transformer box. We'd really like to get those transformers up off over, you know, when you have the transformers over the water, there's always a hazard that something's going to come out of them. We'd like to get them up on the hill. This whole plan takes all of that into account. This is inside the Snake House. Unfortunately, you can't actually see a snake at the moment when they took the pictures. But this is the check valve as it comes up to the top of the hill before it starts the two-mile trek back into town. Oh, and that's all I got. So thank you, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Bronson, yeah?
I have just a couple. The pumps that's there now, how often do they have to cycle?
So right now, we're running them Monday through Wednesday?
Usually, it depends on the summer or winter, every other day.
Okay.
We're trying to run them at night to keep, you know, keep the voltage high demand.
Right.
Power cost.
Yeah. So, Mr. Durham, right now, we don't have to run them 24/7 because, you know, I mentioned we're using about a million and a half gallons a day, we have the capacity to use four. When we stopped serving Pioneer with water, we're fortunate enough not to have to run those pumps all the time. So they're running about half the week, and I give the staff a lot of credit for trying to optimize that time.
So you have to run the two pumps, so we cycle them on and off, depending on when they're working or not. So we have some of them down for about a week, and we've got to repack them or fix them because they use so much water on the dock. And our pond with the geoliner, it's leaking, so we pump it from there to our pond, which holds so many millions of gallons of water. So it's kind of an all-in-one fix, get the pumps working, down to 300 horsepower pumps from the 500, doing the tests on the water flows. With 300 horsepower pumps, we can draw the same amount of water that we need, meets our demand, meets our permitting for 4 million gallons, but less draw, less load, 300 horsepower, saves power, better service.
Cycling pumps is expensive. I mean, the starting current's probably nine times greater.
Good.
Oh. The pumps you have installed now, what capacity do they run at, like percentage, you know, on a variable speed?
There's no variable speed. It's light switch.
So the five to seven, or whatever, that's the new pumps that were previously installed?
Say that again?
Did I miss that?
I'm sorry, could you ask the question again?
I have five variable speed pumps, some of them you've already purchased, but they're not installed.
Well, there are only two that we've purchased and not installed. There are five that have been purchased, they're installed, they're working now at different parts of the system.
And they're variable speed?
That's correct.
Okay, so what capacity do they typically run at? Do you know?
Well, it depends on demand, because some of those run the pumps that go upriver, or excuse me, up the highway, Long Creek Highway, up to Unity Church Pumping Tank. So it's on demand.
Yeah.
But they're on, we have those on a stator, we can adjust on our phones, we adjust those. And we run, and the Apple Tower, everything runs at night, we run at night. But to your point, the two pumps at Charlemagne Park, they're on and off, so when they hit, they hit hard, right? It's a 500-horsepower pump, boom, the whole mezzanine shakes, it turns on, comes on. But yeah, there's no variable. So the idea behind it is, is to get variable speeds, run them at 10% for a longer period of time, which reduces our rate, reduces our pressure, and it's better for the entire system, without that hard punch every time it comes on.
And then, so the $300,000, that's, you know, the, you know, the 900 and the 300, that's, my question is, and maybe a question for Ms. Brock, would it be best for us to set that up as a contingency while we wait for the, for us to know exactly what it is? I can prove the 900-something thousand, and then have 300-something as a contingency, waiting to know?
Could be an option at the pleasure of the council.
And, Mr. Durham, as far as we're concerned, if that's how you'd like to set up, we'd appreciate it.
Just think it would be, I mean, it's there, you know, and then just wait for the final numbers.
Name of the may, sir. What is your name?
I'm Lee Baker.
Lee Baker.
L E I G H B A K.
I G H.
Utility Director. Thank you.
Okay, so would I need to make a motion then?
I'm sorry.
I could, Mr. Chairman, just to address that real quick, the, these ordinancees, Salem and Westminster, at this juncture, read in two steps. So we have the appropriation of the full amount, the 2 million for Salem and the 1.3 for Westminster. So that takes the ARPA money, draws it down, and sets it aside, and the spending provision is up to that amount. So there's no requirement that it be spent. Also, written into the ordinance is a requirement that we have something similar to a federal grant agreement. So there will be periodic checkbacks and some approvals for y'all because, just like federal grant, there are a number of hurdles we have to jump over, things we have to do. Those are going to flow through to Westminster, in this case, or Salem and the others, so, and y'all will be, again, overseers over that. So we'll be back, and there's no requirement that the 1.3 million be spent under the ordinance, so hopefully it'll come in under.
If the project cost 990 or 1.1, then that's what it would be.
Right.
That's what we're funding is the project.
Yeah. So what is the, what's the market right now for pumps? I mean, what's the availability of getting them, and is the price is overelevated right now because of demand?
Well, so to speak to the first part of that, the most two V F Ds that we purchased, but we haven't yet installed, they didn't manufacture them until we bought, like, we had, we did an R F P, we had a number of companies bid, they gave us the schematics. Once the council approved their bid, then they went out and constructed them, and that took, what, four months, roughly? I would imagine that the same thing would happen again. When we priced this, I'm going to go back if that's all right with you, kind of help me answer your question. When we, well, yeah, it's in the memo that we sent the last time. When we priced this back in March, we were pretty confident in the numbers, and if we had gotten that funding source from the state, I felt real confident that we would have been able to go through, and we wouldn't have realized those price increases. I believe I inflated that price by 30%. So when you look at the memo, we have those two 300 horsepowers listed at 448. I believe the original price we had for that was 30% less. And so we've had a number of mechanical parts, mechanical items, metal items, that we've seen have that inflationary rate. So that's how I got here. I think this number is safe. I don't think I'm asking too much. That helps.
Just as true as the dollars out there now, everybody's looking at our homes. Structure.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, John Loomis mentioned about staffing and everything else. We've got those same pressures as I know you do as a county, so we're interested to see how it comes out of, as anybody else.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
First reading of the filed ordinance. Ordinance 2021-16, an ordinance authorizes the convenience of these rights to Oconee Joint Regional Sewer Authority for the purpose of sewer infrastructure construction and maintenance at the Golden Corner Commons Park and other matters related thereto. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
So I got.
Any discussion?
I got a question. Just right away, let's say that we build a spec building in there, and we tap into our pump station there, are we going to have to have that through the sewer authority, or is that going to be ours down to that pump station?
From the...
Rather than giving it to the sewer authority?
From the proposed spec building?
Yeah, I mean, if we had a building there, if we had 50 buildings there, and they bring sewer to the pump station, is the sewer authority going to take control of that line, or is it going to remain ours because it's on our property?
Any lines coming out from the pump station, to my belief, would be Oconee County's, provided Oconee County funded them. If the sewer authority funded them for a specific purpose or their selection, then they would own the line.
Well, that's, basically what I'm saying is, if we got sewer lines running through that property, Golden Corners, is that ours?
If we allocate the funding and we pay for the lines, and those lines...
That's what I want to know.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
No.
Okay, there's no first and final readings. Discussion regarding action items, 2021...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
There is a first and final, I just wanted to make sure you noted that over executive session.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Just didn't want somebody to leave knowing that there was a 2021-08.
Yes, after, excuse me, after executive session, there is one scheduled. You're correct. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, discussion regarding action items, 2021, Edward Byrne Memorial JAG Grant Notification. Oconee County Sheriff's Department may receive an allocation of $13,382 from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. The grant program requires the notification of a tent be made available for county council and public to review and comment on the proposed use of funds. Sheriff's Department plans to use the funds from this program to purchase five tasers. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion. Make a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
2017 Hyundai HX480L excavator, Rockaway, $184,386. The budget, $567,000. Project cost, $184,386. Balance, $382,000, excuse me, $382,614. It's staff recommendation in Council, one, approve the purchase of a 2017 Hyundai HX480L excavator from Nashville Equipment Dealers LLC, doing business as A R H I LLC, in the amount of $184,386. And to approve the trade-in for the machines, equipment listed above. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Hart, you did research on this one, didn't you?
Yes, I did. But they have posted it, too.
He was quiet there, though. He's got us now, though. We're staying alive, man.
All right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Change order number one, P O 53793, W K Dixon Work Authorization Number Three, Amendment Number One, airport amount FAA, 90%, $127,431.90. State, 5%, $7,079.55. County, 5%, $7,079.55. Total change order, $141,591. Original P O amount, $137,000. Purchase order total, $278,591. Budget, $141,591. Project cost, $121,591. Balance of zero. It is staff recommendation in Council, one, approve change order number one, P O 53793, work authorization number three, amendment number one, in the amount of $141,591. Purchase order total, $278,591. W K Dixon and Company, Inc., for professional services for construction administration and construction observation for the relocation of Nevo Church Road. And two, authorize the county administrators to approve and execute any additional change orders to purchase, order 53793, as long as approval from the FAA has been obtained and matching funds are available. Is there a motion to approve?
So may I?
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Due to the weather... Due to the weather, now, ever since I've been alive, I think we've had weather. And then they've got a tornado highlighted or emphasized. There wasn't a tornado down there. Did anybody find an airplane up in a tree or sheet metal from those buildings in a tree? No, I went down there today and talked with people that lived there and they weren't affected by a tornado, yet they went in there and cleaned up for this tornado. And these people, they, the utilities, they had to sit back and watch the utilities. You know how long it took to put the water line in there for the city of Sonaca? Four days. I don't know about the electricity or the the telephone line, but but that was there. And they got, that they had to do this, they had to muck out something, they they had to do that. I worked with the highway department, they run in there and you start doing a cut and you hit whale dirt. They undercut that, then hauled clay from another portion and and built that up to so it would stabilize. And they act like this is something new, that they had to go in there and muck out some terrible soil. So these people are taking us for a ride, far as I am concerned. This total bill that the first post was $457,700. Now they want to add 355,712, and that is 78% more that they want to add. If they'd added half of it, I might could understand, but this, these people are soaking us. And I I suggest that next time we start looking for another company to do our work like this because the only thing I see they didn't do in here, they didn't put anything about the fires in California affecting this job. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just want to, just clarity on this through the FAA is funding on this change order 90% of this for $127,000. The state is paying another 5%, which is the 7,000. The county, I know we're all taxpayers to all of this, so I don't want to, you know, but the county money that is due on this change order, $7,079.55. I'm not a professional on that, but I do know from what I've been understanding with WK Dixon and the work that they've done for us, I don't think they're taking advantage of us. I understand what you're talking about, Mr. Hart, on tornado and things like that, but I don't do this for a living. But I also know that they're, from my understanding, doing a very good job out there. And for our money that we're pay, we're paying, it is very well worth it for what we're getting, especially for the value that airport provides to our county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
May I add to that? They were responsible for these plans being done, is that correct?
Um, may I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, no, sir, that is not correct. WK Dixon does not draw the plans. The plans are engineered and then they're put out to bid. The items that you listed earlier as far as what had been entalored which caused the delays, WK Dixon is in responsive to delays caused by the construction project itself for the relocation of Mount Nevo. So they didn't technically do any of the construction. What they do on the county's behalf is provide the professional services related to construction administration, work authorization, oversight, like, basically there are eyes and ears out there. And because they are engineers and they do construction management projects specific to airports, the construction side of that is separate from the request here.
I still have another question. I don't know who did this, but some term that you're gonna be familiar with is stormwater engineer. Who did the stormwater engineering out there? I rode through that job and they've got a silt pond down there that's got water bleeding over the top of it, going into a ditch and running down under the road that we're having built and then to a pipe that crosses the other road. And the pipe that it's going through is probably a 12-inch.
Yes, sir.
So they got, somewhere down the line, Okone County will be in there placing that that drainage, you wait and see.
Oh, yes, sir, I know exactly where you're talking about. One of the pipes that is connected on the opposite side across from, I think, the Benson residence is a pipe that a citizen put in that connected to a county pipe without the county knowledge. And it had not been engineered and did result in a lot of silt sedimentation settling on a certain side of the road. The detention pond that you're discussing apparently is in spec, but there will have to be measures both on the private person's behalf and the county's behalf if they if they want that removed.
Reason I said that, I couldn't find the other end of it. I saw where it was going into and I knew that, and I don't know where it went under the house or not, but it's going down through their yard.
I know, and it has been, we have dealt, and I hope she doesn't mind me saying her name on the record, we have helped with this Benson as much as we can. Our main objective, as you can see, we are well delayed in the progress of construction for the relocation, for the West Saperen expansion clearing, and then as your third measure tonight, the B4, the paving of the West Saperen expansion. And we'll work as closely as possible, as we would with any citizen, to find a resolution to prevent the water and silt infiltration in her yard. But at the same time, that private pipe must be disconnected. It it was not engineered and it is not a county pipe. And I think somebody had a great idea, you know, we'll just connect to that one since it's there. But where it flows out is not a benefit to three of the residents there.
Is it allowed? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Change order number one, PO 53794, WK Dixon Work Authorization Number Five. Amendment Number One, airport amount FAA, 90%, $40,572.20. State, $2,225.40. County, $2,225.40. Total change order, $44,508. Original PO amount, $220,000. Purchase order total, $266,508. $44,508. Project cost, $44,508. Balance of zero. It's staff's recommendation that Council Approve One. Approved change order number one, PO 53794, work authorization number five. Amendment Number One, in the amount of $44,508. Purchase order total, $266,508 to WK Dixon and Company, Inc., for professional services for construction administration, construction observation for expansion of the West Saperen site prep. And authorize the county administrator to approve and execute any additional change orders to purchase order 53794 as long as approval from FAA has been obtained and matching funds are available. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Well, they used the same paragraph of how they've worked on the tornado and cleaned up all that. That never happened, I reckon, but you can read it and figure out for yourself how much of it's true and how much is not.
Any other discussion?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Hart, this was not for the construction, this is just for the oversight of the construction. The change order is for the length of time that is in excess of the original estimate. There is not an indication that I'm aware of that the WK Dixon Company or any division of them had worked on the tornado, but the tornado caused the delays in the construction because the construction industry was doing, assisting firsthand impacted tornado. Victims, I don't know what better word, residents, businesses.
So they wasn't working on this project because of working to clean up the tornado?
Correct, and we had a large industry, as you all know, that was significantly impacted by tornado damage. This contractor, with county permission, was requested to go work as a primary contractor on the site of the large industry that was impacted so that we could ensure that those people that work in that industry could return to work as soon as possible and not have to face the disastrous effects of a tornado on top of it.
So the question, in other words, since they delayed that, they can charge us because they had a delay because it was somewhere else working. That that makes not as much sense as the part about the the fires in California. Thank you.
Now, if that was the primary reason for the delay, that would be a consideration, Mr. Hart, but it was a portion of a series of delays that occurred over the last year. As you all know, there was an active pandemic going on. Supplies were difficult. I understand your frustration, I can sense it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Change order number one, PO 53838, WK Dixon Work Authorization Number Six. Amendment Number One, airport amount FAA, 90%, $152,651.70. State 5%, $8,480.65. County 5%, $8,480.65. Total change order, $169,613. Original PO amount, $98,700. Purchase order total, $268,313. Budget, $169,613. Project cost, $169,613. Balance of zero. It's staff's recommendation that Council Approve One. Approved change order number one, PO 53838, work authorization number six. Amendment Number One, in the amount of $169,613. Purchase order total, $268,313 to WK Dixon and Company, Inc., for professional services for construction administration and construction observation for West Apron expansion paving. And authorize the county administrator to approve and execute any additional change orders to purchase order 53838 as long as approval from FAA has been obtained and matching funds are available. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Council approval of funding allocation to Fair Oak View Center in an amount of $17,500 for development of a comprehensive strategic master plan for the Fair Play community in preparation for growth and development in the southern portion of Okone County, primarily due to the expansion of the wastewater infrastructure. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
My second.
Any discussion?
Just a clarification, Ms. Brock. So we are understanding why we're going from one organization to another.
Correct, so the Fair Oak View Center, as most of everyone knows, is located in the former Equate Intermediate School, which is located in the Equate Community in Okone County. Fair Oak View Center is the primary owner of the former Fair Oak School in Fair Play. Fair Play is in desperate need and will continue to be as we work through the basin studies and and sewer expansion. Future plans for the Fair Play community to have a outside professional resource that can provide potential and possible land identification, planning tools, basically, so that the basin studies could more accurately reflect the likelihood of gallons per day needed or excess pumps needed, et cetera, et cetera, simultaneously providing the community a tool in which they can utilize to plan the future of the community because they are not incorporated and currently are not zoned as such.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Quarry closing at 12:00 p.m. on Fridays for maintenance. With high level of demand for products from quarry, it's difficult to keep up with our maintenance schedule while producing enough material to meet customer demands. Closing at 12:00 p.m. on Fridays would allow staff to perform any required maintenance and inspections to keep the new plant running properly. This routine maintenance schedule should help prevent unexpected downtime due to breakdowns. This would also allow staff to routinely stays past closing time to perform maintenance and be able to leave work on more, on time, more often, thus reducing overtime expenses. It's staff's recommendation to close your quarry at noon Fridays to perform maintenance. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion, open up discussion.
Second. So, Ms. Brock, can you elaborate on this?
This has gone through a series of brainstorming activities with staff and the leadership at the quarry. With staffing shortages, with current demand being at a consistent all-time high, record-breaking sales on an almost daily basis, there is little room for us to protect the investment of the plant that we purchased December of 2019. It has worked very well in the last few months. We do have some hiccups here and there, but being able to stop the action of the machine running itself in order for us to do the maintenance that is required for us to be within the parameters of the warranty is just something that, and I wish we had another answer, I'll be honest. I wish we had, could magically wave a wand and say, oh, we can just do it on Saturday or we can do it on Sunday. As long as we're going to face the staffing issues that we have currently faced, that we are currently facing, I can't make the promise that we're going to have an adequate staff to be able to do the maintenance that is required on the equipment. And when we say close, we don't mean stop selling stockpile. We just mean not actually produce rock at the time so that we can have more hands on deck to perform the sometimes regular routine, sometimes preventative maintenance. Somebody better stop me if I'm saying something wrong.
You're doing a fine job.
We looked at ask, coming and asking y'all for more employees. But if you'll go look at our website right now, you'll see that we have a plethora of employment opportunities in Okone County and there's lack of interest because of the wage that we pay in the current economy that we're living in. We are unable to offer incentives or anything other than a general procedural and and policy-driven method of payment. We can't offer bonuses for people to come in and work extra hours. We can't incentivize them by saying, we can give you X number of comp time days because that's not within our own policy. Doesn't mean we can't change policy by coming to you. But at some point, we're going to have to face the fact that we're running a machine that we are not adequately maintaining and it's causing failures that we are, we are dealing with now. I don't know exactly how many customers were reached out to on the customer appreciation day.
Of approximately 300.
And we had.
Not on that day, but during a few days.
Okay, not on that one day. We've had feedback originally, I think there was a request or consideration from staff thinking that if they, if there was some downtime in the middle of the week, that it would be easier on the customers. But overwhelmingly, the customers reported back that that they would be more satisfied with it being on a Friday. I wish we could do it on Saturday or Sunday. I wish we had the number of people that we would need and that they were adequately trained because, as you all know, and I've repeated this 100 million times, it is a mine, it's an active mine. So there is a series of training events for safety reasons. You can't just bring in someone to go load. If we could bring in a contract crew to do the maintenance, we would be happy to do that. There just is not one because of the type of equipment that the county purchased to hunt in the quarry the same way. It's, we're stuck, and no pun intended, between a rock and a hard place.
Well, I I agree that we've got to do something different. Doing nothing is not the right thing. We've got to change something, and I agree with that. And I guess what I'm hearing is we'll still be able to service our customers on Friday afternoons. We just won't be running rock on Friday afternoon.
Right.
Okay, so, I mean, and and if this doesn't work, then you come back to us with with something else.
And I'll be honest, it may not work. I mean, we're looking at attempting to implement in October. I mean, we're looking at attempting to implement in October, of course, that would be with council consideration and approval. Should some other solution pop its pretty little head between now and October? We're not married to the idea of closing. We don't like the idea of closing. We don't like what it does to our businesses. We don't like the fact that it's on a Friday, so should there be an unforeseen, okay, this week is a perfect example of closing on Friday being a disaster for our contractor because they're losing two days to rain. It's only Tuesday. It could be disastrous. Could we open up on those Fridays and say, hey, you know what, we know it rained all week long? We could. I mean, I have no idea in real life the impact that us not doing the maintenance is going to have because we haven't hit that wall yet. We know the investment we made into that equipment. We know that we are not maintaining it at the level currently needed because we just don't have the time because demand is through the roof. I'm going to bring up something I said I wasn't going to bring up tonight, but we have a significant amount of retail rock sales and they have the ability to pay what we don't. There is a company not very far from here that comes in and buys a lot of rock from us and turns around and resales it and can wipe us clean in a matter of hours. And until, and they're valuable customer buyers because they're paying the price that we put in our fee schedule that says that this is the price that would help us make money at the same time while not feeling like we're gouging the rest of the businesses. That, I mean, we don't, there's such a delicate balance in managing how we move forward in a time where employment can be a crisis for us. I'd love to see us be able to get other people trained so that when we do start doing more maintenance with more staff members, there's some credit here because there's some pretty good trained people here, but it's very hard to learn the maintenance on the machine when it's running all the time. And correct me if I'm wrong, I know a lot of the guys out here, they're so good at doing it, but there's only a handful of them because otherwise we're just operating all the time.
We've, we've been tracking our downtime for years, but we've been more concentrated on tracking our downtime that's been unexpected. And you're going to have downtime in a quarry. It's just a matter of trying to plan for it and stay ahead of them. So this has given us an ability to do some concentrated planning with 12 members of our staff in teams of four or teams of three and dedicate some real serious time where we can go and handle some of these issues before they arrive. It's just a screen change, for instance. I mean, sometimes we let our screens go just till the very last minute, and then the last minute is at 1:00. And there we are, down for an hour change in screens. And if we can stay on top of this and have that dedicated time and use all 12 of our employees that we want to dedicate to that instead of counting on four, that will stay and will work on Saturdays, it spreads the load and it helps us to keep our staff healthy and safe.
Yes.
Just for, just kind of put this out there, I'm not in favor of closing, but I see a lot of issues that we have. Salaries, we've been working on that over the last several years. We'll continue to work on that. Starting pay, we need to work on that. You know, paying overtime, I'm never going to complain about paying overtime to the rock quarry. And I've never been able to pay my bills on 40 hours, and I'm sure, I know we all have families and everything like that, but I know a lot of people in businesses, when they quit paying overtime, they were really upset about it. So, you know, we definitely need to have more help to y'all. We need to get the staff in where it's supposed to be. We need, we're buying a lot of equipment, as you've seen coming through here. The new crusher was supposed to make more rock simpler so when we had downtime, we could actually have more rock. Now, we're selling a ton of rock, so I'm not, you know, I'm in full support of everything that y'all are doing, but I, my thing is communication. I know we're working on that. I don't have an issue if you're down on Friday because you had an issue where the machine goes down, as long as it's communicated out to everybody so we don't have 30 trucks showing up. I think we're working and doing a better job on that. I'm not hearing the two-hour complaints that I'm sitting in line. So I think learning the equipment, I think y'all have done a marvelous job of that. It is a fancy piece of equipment, but it was one that, you know, through the research and the interviews that I had with a lot of, we got a lot of your staff, that is exactly what y'all wanted, and it's doing a good job. I think it's doing a better job ever than it has. And I know it was a huge learning curve and I, you know, again, I appreciate all that y'all are doing to learn that piece of machinery and make it do its job, but I think the schedule of downtime, to me, the worst thing I can see is you close down on Friday for maintenance and the thing blows up on Monday. It's going to happen. It's going to happen. There's nothing that you can do for that piece of equipment. So, you know, to me, I think when y'all look at your week and you look at your schedule and your maintenance and you up your production, I think you need to schedule the maintenance, whether that be on a Wednesday or a Thursday, due to whatever the scheduling is or however much rock. I think that's a better method, but I will stand up here to say that, you know, we need to work on, you know, we're in a wage war and I continue to say that, that's why we're sitting here doing these raises like we're doing because it's very, very, you know, when you've got, everybody is. That's why they're throwing thousands of dollars out trying to get people, you know. Mr. Durham brought up a very valid point on our CDL drivers, 12 bucks an hour, you can go do the same thing. We're getting it at McDonald's, you can get $14, probably get a free hamburger. So, you know, those are things that we need to really focus on as council. I know we are, but we really need to commit to it because this is not an issue of where we need to close down when we're doing as good as what y'all are doing. We need to continue to invest in the quarry and that's what, you know, I've continued to do, and I know council's continued to do the same thing, and that's what I'm committed to do, not to close down and are not to stop the quarry. There's going to be times that you're going to have to pull the screen off. And, you know, I don't work on rock quarries, so I'm not going to tell you how to do your job, but I just don't think you can, there's things that you're going to have to do every morning, every afternoon, and every evening to make sure it runs right, and I think if you do this on Friday, people are going to have the expectations that you don't have to do anything else during the week, and when it breaks down, I guarantee you, I can tell you right where they're going to come and say, hey, you're shutting down on Friday so we don't have this problem. So I'm just, I'll support you any way I can, but as in having a specific time that the quarry closes down or the crusher closes down itself, I just think it's that there's a better method that y'all can come up with rather than having a scheduled downtime.
Seventy-three percent of this downtime that we experienced in the last four months could have been avoided through just about the sand. We're, it's just necessary that we have time allotted for that maintenance and that's, we appreciate y'all hearing our concern and we'll do anything we can to come up with the best solution, and we feel like that if we had the chance to try this, that we could go through a trial period and then if it's not working, then we'll come back with another solution.
And I'm not telling you not to maintain it. I'm just, I just, I just think there's some other, I know we're busy and that's the hardest thing is. It's a whole lot easier to get things done with my door closed or when I'm sitting at my house, and especially now, you know, I think this is exactly what we were wanting. This is exactly what, you know, the quarry was wanting when we purchased the new equipment so we could get off of the dinosaur issues that we had with the old plant. So, you know, I'm committed to do a lot of things, but I think in saying, hey, we're closed at 12 on Fridays, I think you're going to have to figure out to say, hey, we're going to look at Tuesday, next Tuesday, we've got to do X, Y, Z, we're going to start that at 3:00 or something like that, so, you know.
And then be able to shut the plant down, is that what you're saying, Mr. Durham?
Well, I mean, if that is what is required to maintain it, I think so, but to schedule it on Fridays, what if you can't get that party until Tuesday?
Well, we wouldn't do that in particular. I mean, we, we tried to let people have the opportunity to give us amendments so that they would be able to make their schedule around our schedule, and so we felt like we were helping the customers manage their process along with us managing our process to do the maintenance.
Right.
So that was why we dedicated a specific time. Other than that, it's going to have to be hit or miss or we may decide to do it on a Tuesday and we can't get all the people notified, you know, that may be coming our way. And, you know, some of these people are coming two hours, some of them drive five hours.
Well, I agree.
To get our sand.
And if they're driving five hours, we're not charging enough. That's the thing we have to, you know, that's the things that we have to think about is, I mean, we're, our focal point is definitely keeping our county citizens where they're supposed to be and those businesses up and running. And I think from a standpoint on your communication with customers we have out there, I think we have the ability to do a really good job at that, and I just, I just don't want people, if you do this, they're going to think that there's not going to be any downtime. And there's going to be downtime. You're going to be down on Friday when you normally crush rock on Friday to have a stockpile on Monday and the machine breaks on Monday, and now all of a sudden, you're closed on Friday. So I'm just saying, you know, I just think from a maintenance standpoint, you've got to work the maintenance out in the schedule and you're going to have to shut the quarry down, but I think scheduling it is going to give a false sense of that's the only time it's going to be down.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How much, let's say 57's starting to crush a run do we have in stockpile on Fridays at 12 noon now?
Depending on the demand, I mean, you know, the crush, the 57's, we sell about as fast as we make it. Occasionally, we'll have 200 tons at the belt, but then like Ms. Brock said, we'll have these companies come in and they'll send three of their big tractor trailers and it's gone, you know, in a matter of 20, 30 minutes. Crusher run, we've got, we've, we keep, you know, we usually keep around 200 tons of that probably on a Friday, but there again, it's cyclical, as different people have larger jobs, you know, it ebbs and flows.
I agree with Mr. Hillary, we need to do something, and I know we're selling a lot of rock, but we're also missing on selling a lot of rock too. Have we reached out, and you have to leave this region because anybody who's your competitor ain't going to do it, but have we reached out to anyone else as a benchmark to say, how do you do it? What's your maintenance schedule?
Yes, sir. Most quarries close on Fridays because they have surplus and they do maintenance. A lot of them do.
So then we've got to figure out how we can get more surplus.
We got to get some surplus built up, and, you know, we're working at that and that's part of this whole process of figuring.
And would overtime be a solution? I mean, I would think guys will want some overtime. I may be completely wrong.
The four or the five that are getting it right now, we're getting about 100 hours a week overtime, and four guys, and then you throw the, me and Billy and Ms. Liana who are salary, we have a lot of overtime too, but that's not figured in the 100 hours.
If I may say something about the overtime, we had this previous discussion in your committee meeting, and I think it's worth saying in a council meeting on the record, when someone's making $12.83 an hour, overtime is less than $20 an hour. That's not appealing for someone who has a family and has the ability to have a second job where they can make 60-something dollars in an hour cutting their neighbor's grass. Less than $20 an hour is not appealing as an overtime number to a lot of staff members.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Board of Commissioners and Appointments. Building code is appealable. One at-large seat, two questionnaires on file for this seat. Council will go into executive session for the following purposes. Receive legal advice, discuss personal matter and related potential litigation. Two, discussion regarding economic development matter, project Drift. Three, discussion regarding economic development matter, project Thread. Four, discussion regarding economic development matter, project Slipper. Five, discussion regarding economic development matter, project Street Car. Six, discussion regarding an economic development matter, project Remi. Seven, discussion regarding an economic development matter, project Matlock. Eight, discussion regarding economic development matter, project West Clemson. Is there a motion to go?
First by.
Oh, excuse me. Nine, receive legal advice and discuss appealable litigation. Thank you. Is there a motion to go in executive session?
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to reconvene?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor.
Uh huh.
No action was taken in executive session. First and final reading with final resolution. Resolution twenty.
Mr. Chairman, we need to do the executive session items first, the motions from that.
Okay, sorry.
It's a minor thing if we could. So as to item number one, we do need a motion on this. A motion would be, first the matter was receive legal advice and discuss personnel matter and related potential litigation. We have motion to make the county attorney and county administrator to draft a demand letter and send it as discussed.
To move.
Second. All in favor.
Uh huh.
The next item is number three on the executive session list. That's discussion regarding an economic development matter, project thread. Need a motion to commence negotiations as discussed.
Make motion.
Second.
All in favor.
Uh huh.
Final matter submitted from executive session regarding the receipt of legal advice and discussion on opioid litigation. Need a motion to direct the county attorney to convey council's preference for proposal number two from the letter from the litigation attorneys.
Move.
Second. All in favor.
Uh huh. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. First and final reading with final resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh eight. A resolution consenting to and acknowledging notice of assignment by ACI Plastic South LLC, ACI Properties South LLC and PreZero US Inc., FKA Green Cycle US Holdings Inc., to PreZero US Services LLC of a fee in lieu of ad verum taxes agreement and other matters related thereto. Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
All in favor?